I'm not intending that long. That's not my style. We are already 1 hour and 25 minutes behind. Do we have enough board members? One, two, three. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. We have enough. Okay. We have a fiscal year 2016 annual audit plan, which is on the board doc. And I assume that everybody has had a chance to review it prior to the work session today. Fully knowing that nobody has submitted any question in advance, I assume that there is no question from board members.
That's a bad assumption.
That's a bad assumption, all right. Ms. Wademan.
What we have before you is the 2016 proposed audit plan. A couple of things I'd like to say before we get into the plan itself. We built the plan a little light purposefully. Several reasons. One, I think that the auditor general, once one is appointed, should have the room within the audit plan itself to add the topics that the board wants the auditor general to work on. So we've left a little room for that. So that we still have that growth ability within the plan, keeping in mind that it's flexible and can be changed at any point with the permission of the board. We also left it a little light because we are down two staff members and we're having difficulty filling the positions. And I'm working closely with HR to look at other avenues to get qualified candidates. Because what we're getting, they're just not qualified for the positions that we're advertising. And we are advertising on audit websites as well as through our internal sources. And we've done some outreach. And we're not being very successful. I think part of it might be the timing. But I'm hoping that we can get these positions filled. So there's two things that are driving the weight of the plan itself. What you have is a couple of carryover audits that were approved as part of 15. And they were told, let's see. It was listed in the plan that they would carry over based on the audit itself. Those being the asset management audit, which has started. And we have part of that going on simultaneously with our summer audits. The claims management audit and this year's activity fund audit. Activity fund audit, the report would go to the Audit Committee and the Board in October. We are in the midst of that. And then for the new audits for the upcoming year, we propose three. The online campus, looking at the efficiency and effectiveness of that process. We are running that in-house. And there's a lot of ways that that could be managed. And are we actually utilizing it and making that process efficient? And then homebound and home-based instruction. That kind of ties in with some of the changes that have been made with the disciplinary process along with the board. And then continuing the business process, turnover audits that have been implemented in the past. The last thing that would be on the list would be next year's summer audit. That would start the planning process later in the year. And then the audit itself would carry over into the summer. The other tasks that are listed under other audit projects are the standard things that typically come in an audit office. The staff development, follow-up reviews, and then typical audit administrative tasks. Added to the end of the audit plan, at the request of the Audit Committee and the Board, are the program evaluation studies. Just for clarity, those are not internal audit projects. They are projects that are going to be completed by the Office of Program Evaluation. And those are the four studies that have been suggested for addition to the plan this year.
Okay, with that, any questions from board members or comments? Mrs. Strauss, to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
I'm fine with the plan as the Audit Committee has come forward. I do have one question. I have discovered that Commonwealth of Virginia has changed, I believe, some of the requirements as a result of the Virginia online campus. I don't, we haven't done any of them yet, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that I bumped into that of late. That there is something else coming down the pike that will impact fees on the online campus and how we administer it.
And when we look at that, we would look at what the state requirements were as well as what our internal requirements are. So that would come into play as part of our process.
Right, okay.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
So from a macro level standpoint, I would like to have both Teresa and Chris Horton, see if you could at least give me a sense of, the plan looks similar to what we do each year. But looking at the fact that we have reduced staff right now. And we're always trying to maximize, you know, what are the most mission-critical things that we should be doing in the audit department? Is there, I mean, what we're looking at here, is this your professional judgment that this is what we need to be doing? Or is there anything that we could, you know, perhaps revise based on the fact that giving staff, given the staffing and given the fact that we don't always have to keep doing business as usual? Is there anything in this audit plan that maybe we could direct our time and attention in a better way?
When this was developed, we were looking at multi-layers. We were looking at the tier risks for the organizational risk assessment. Also areas where we may be able to gain efficiencies and what's been done in other school divisions. At this point, this gives us a broad approach. And it also places us in more student-centric areas where we can have a better impact on what you're offering to the students in an efficient manner. When you're looking at the online campus, that is a costly program. Are we actually spending our dollars the way we should? And is it achieving what we want to achieve? Or could we do it in a better fashion? Same thing with the homebound, home-based instruction. That's something that has increased with some of the changes in disciplines. So all of these have an impact on the goals of the organization. But they also cross all tier levels of organizational risk, which is what we were looking for. And it's putting us more into the instructional side and taking us out of that central office side where we know what the central areas are doing. Now let's do some outreach and look at what some of the other programmatic areas are doing, which is one of the directions. So I think this is a good direction to go. What we're finding, when you compare to what other divisions are doing, we're actually leading the way in much of the work that's happening. We're touching things that, if you look at most school divisions, they're looking at only at the schools. And we've broadened quite a bit in the last five to seven years in some of our topics. Chris, you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you. I think that in any audit that we do, it's going to be important that we take a look consistently through the audit. Are, do we feel like that the risks that are initially considered as part of the audit objective adequately being addressed? And sometimes when you have an audit and you feel comfortable that the risks that engendered the audit in the first place are adequately being addressed, you can say, you know what? We need to just go ahead and finish this off here, tie this off, and be able to deploy our resources more profitably somewhere else. So I think that's going to have to be something that is an ongoing conversation within the audit department as well as with the Audit Committee to determine at what point any risks have been effectively addressed within any of these, to be able to say, if, you know, potentially to be able to say, okay, maybe we, at this point in time, in October or January, something along those lines, could profitably redeploy resources. And that's something that, as a professional, it's going to be incumbent upon us to be able to say, okay, yes, report to the Audit Committee. We may need to change because our risks are more important to be deployed somewhere else. But we'll have to have that conversation.
So, for example, like our business process turnover audits, is that something where, in terms of looking at our focus of risk, we could be doing this in a more efficient way to, you know, go with how the plan's laid out now, but maybe not keep doing it in the same rote manner and put our focuses in another way?
With those audits, and I'll address that because that came on, that actually came about through the Audit Committee at the request of Dr. Garza, providing those support and services to our principals. That when they come into a school, that they know what they're starting with and they know what slate they're starting on. And they have a foundation from which to build from there. When we first implemented these this year, it was every turnover got done. Now that we've gone through that process and looked at it, we've fine-tuned the process. And it doesn't make sense to do 100% of turnovers as of July 1. We're going to start looking at things later in the year. And in this plan, it discusses that change. It suggests that we start looking at those schools where the turnovers are happening kind of in the middle of the year and not at the typical July 1. We're recommending that we look at turnovers that, and I think I was looking at September, October timeframe through, and I don't remember how it was written here. Not recommending staff turnover in May and June be added to the queue, and that was for this year. But looking at turnovers that take place after the school year starts, which will significantly decrease the time spent on these turnover audits. These audits have garnered a lot of positive comments from principals who aren't sure what they're getting into when they change schools. So I think it's a service, a positive service, that we're offering our principals when they go into a new building. But by changing the methodology and not doing 100%, and looking at those that are turning over during the school year as opposed to 100%, we're going to be significantly cutting down on that. So I think we've made that process much more efficient than it was by still providing the service and offering the support that the schools need.
Thank you both. So to my colleagues, I think my primary emphasis to all of you who've been on Audit Committee and working with our auditing office, I hope we will continue to encourage our professional staff to feel like they can really come to us and say, okay, we know this is what we've traditionally done and it's, you know, this has been the pattern. But, you know, given we had done the risk assessment of the division, I'd like to make sure that our audit plan can continue to be as nimble and refined based on the needs of the system. So I just think it's important that however many agree that we make sure that the audit professionals feel like you guys have that direction and guidance. Because I think that your role is vital to telling us, you know, it's not just what our interests are or what we've been doing, but really like maximizing the work you're doing. So thank you both, and I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. I think I still understand that the request being made by Mrs. McLaughlin go without saying that they are always, you know, welcome to give us what they think, let us know what they think. Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I think as a board, we still haven't been very clear about what we expect of our Office of Internal Audit. And the reason I say that is there's a sentence in here that I very much disagree with. But I think there's a need, there's a need for us as a board to get to clarity about it. The sentence that bothered me was the projects that follow, this is under program evaluation study, sorry. I think it's on page eight. The projects that follow are not the responsibility of, nor under the guidance of the Office of Internal Audit. Now, of course, I understand that those investigations have to be done by the Office of Program Evaluation. But I think what, in my opinion, what we need from our internal auditors, Mr. Moon, is a couple of things. First of all, to assess those evaluations that come to us from a standpoint of, I can't think of the right word now, but plausibility, not that, completeness. To what degree should we feel that the study appears to be comprehensive? Or does the study have aspects that we should be asking questions about? Obviously, there is an area of expertise. And does the audit, does the audit office, in fact, for some of these things, need to engage somebody from the outside who has more expertise but provides an independent view from that of the superintendent's office? Something else that I think, and I offer this to all of my board members, is that when we get these reviews, that we ask that there's a component of finance accompanying it. So for instance, we got this really fine review of the math program, which revealed some very interesting things. As I recall, I don't think we saw the financial information with it. And I think just as a, again, us as a board is our expectation. I think hand in hand with the evaluation, we should have the financial information. We should be able to say, go, no-go. Now, in the case of mathematics, of course, we're going to go. We're not going to stop teaching mathematics. But I think there is a need for us to be looking at the program evaluation and the costs hand in hand. And I think we're not doing that. So we've made a great step forward, Mr. Moon, in bringing forward the program evaluations through the audit process. But I think there's more that we could do. And I would recommend, and I know that we'll be reconstituting our committees, but I would recommend to the Audit Committee next year and then to the Board in general that perhaps we get to some clarity about what our expectations are in terms of program evaluation. You've certainly heard mine.
You know, my expectation is, my expectation is to have that discussion once we have AG in place, along with the AG, you know, what AG will be able to do as far as the program evaluation is concerned. With that, I have Mrs. Reed, Ms. Evans, and Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you for these materials. I'm following on Mr. Velkoff in terms of the dollar figures. In some places, I'll just pick as an example, under the program evaluation, English as a second language. If it doesn't explicitly say efficiency or, you know, some kind of a financial, should we assume then that that wouldn't be looked at? Like, this one seems to read more programmatically about best practices, so.
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question. Those projects actually came from OPE. And I asked, and. Mr. Smith, can you help, please? So I'm not really sure. And Mr. Velkoff, just to let you know, that's just to make it very clear what does fall under the audit department because of our standards of independence and where the reporting structure is. Because if we reported lower than certain levels within the government auditing standards, we'd no longer be considered independent. So we have to show the division between OPE and audit at this point, which is the necessity of the sentence.
So I've now actually raised two issues. One is the fact that, you know, whether or not these pieces should be included. And then there's a separate question about whether financial information should be included throughout. So even in the pieces before this part, when you talk about your studies, unless it specifically talks about efficiency, that's my question is, would you intend to look at the finances or not?
For the audit side, definitely. Because when we're doing an audit, we're looking at efficiency. We're looking at effectiveness. And we're looking at not only the programmatic side or the operations and business side, but we're also looking at the numbers. That's inherent in the audit process itself.
And as we're looking at future collaborations between the audit office and OPE, I see that as a natural link. So with regard to the math study, so the original question around the math study, finances or the financials weren't necessarily a part of that when we were looking at the curriculum. So when we look at any of the studies that we've posted for you, it's really to think about the question. And if the question is around efficiency, then we would look at the financials. But if there is no question around the finances in order to have an impact on policy, then that question wouldn't necessarily be answered by that particular study. But it is doable. And again, as we look at collaboration between audit and OPE, as we look at those individual studies, then the efficiency aspect might naturally be a part of the audit process.
And I think it makes sense. I like seeing these together like this, even though it reflects two different organizations. And then my other question is just specifically regarding the homebound and home-based. I wondered how that was identified, whether it was by cost. Again, I can't help but think, you know, was that a high-dollar item? Was that begging for opportunities? Because I looked back again eight or nine hours ago when we were talking in transportation facilities. They mentioned the homeless and special ed populations as being ones that they were worried about in terms of the amount of money we're spending there. So can you help me understand why you chose those?
Yes, in part, it was because there is, well, in our judgment, a need to be able to have some coverage across a breadth of the organization and the, kind of the school support departments, the ISD and DSS, to have them represented with some audits in those areas as well. In part, to be able to show that this is a viable function for those particular areas. And also because those particular areas have not been looked at in the past. And they do represent some risks, not only for our organization, but in other organizations have seen that as areas of risk as well.
So I guess all I'm saying, and that makes perfect sense to me. But I would be hopeful then that as staff and other departments identify areas of concern, such as the ones I just mentioned, that maybe there's a way that it can get looped back to you, at least for consideration for another time.
That does happen. When we request recommendations for inclusion, some of that comes from management. We have those discussions. And they're also sending us ideas and things that they feel that we should be looking at on a regular basis. So it's not a closed office. It's more of an ongoing conversation with both management as well as the Board.
That's excellent. So, and last question, just quickly, on this, back to the ESOW. If, for example, some of us wanted to advocate for adding some financial analysis to this rather than just the programmatic, how would we go about doing that since those folks aren't here? And I realize that's, you know, not really the focus today.
I think that you could take a look at that as a board. It could go through Audit Committee. It could be directed by the superintendent. So I think there are a variety of ways that we could, you know, add that particular nuance to the question as we look at ESOW.
Yeah, thank you. And again, because we know it will be, I think, on the list of items to look at for the budget anyway, just would seem to me that, you know, we may as well start to link these disparate pieces together to the extent that we can. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans, Mrs. Smith, and Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I appreciate this report. And I think this is a good mix of program.
It's not a report, it's a proposal.
A proposal. The proposal, I appreciate the proposal. That I think it's a good mix of audits and program evaluations. So, you know, I think we've got some meaty things that we want to address now. I did have some specific questions on two of them. One is on, at the very end, with the study number four, outcomes from a decade of changes in discipline policies and practices. I'm looking at the description and looking at the changes, 2011 in particular pinpointed. I just want to point out, as prefaced in my remark, that this board actually made some extremely significant changes in discipline after we had our task force. So I think some of the most significant changes have come from this board. And I see that you have expanded it to include a wider timeframe. Specifically, one of the changes that we made was in parent notification. And it's not mentioned here, but I'm wondering if that was something that you were going to be looking at or if that goes beyond or outside your charge.
So we'll be looking at all the changes that occurred within a particular or within a given timeframe. So because there have been so many changes to our discipline processes in this current timeframe, it's hard for us to look at cumulative effect.
I see what you're saying.
So we're only going to look at a slice in time to see how effective those changes were within that given time period. And then we'll go to the, when the next changes were put in place, we'll look at those changes to see what impact those changes had on discipline rates during that given timeframe. So as we look at the last changes that were made, we'll look at all the changes and talk about how those changes impacted our discipline rates over the last few years. So it's very difficult to say that when we put something in place in 2002, that it's had an impact to today because, again, we've made several changes.
Quite a few, yeah.
To the process.
Okay. And parent notification, is that beyond the scope of this?
No, we'll look at all changes.
You'll look at that change too, okay.
Parent notification was a major change. And so we'll be looking at all of those changes and how those changes impacted students during that given timeframe until those next set of changes were made.
Excellent, good. And then my other question is, let me see. I think it's on page four. We have the online campus, the performance audit. And it talks here about online campus being used by students who can't go to school at the scheduled time. But this, the online campuses expanded far beyond that now. We have a lot of students who are taking online campuses voluntarily by choice. And I think this is going to only increase exponentially, is my guess. Is this a narrow focus on just one type of student? Or is this the entire online campus that you're looking at?
We would be looking at the entire online campus. But this description that you see here is the description that's available on our public website. It specifically states that the students going to the online campus are those who don't have the ability to make it to the normal classroom. And we were wondering, as part of this audit, whether or not we would have greater benefits and more ability of student offerings in, by looking at the bigger picture and comparing that to what we're seeing in other jurisdictions, as well as how have we implemented our online campus? And is there a better way that we could have managed it? Not that there's anything wrong with what we're doing, but is there any way we can make it more efficient?
And I would suggest that probably our description then needs to be updated because this has changed over the last several years. Including, you know, we did allow in 2012 to have students take an online course in lieu of their first period so they could come in later in the day. And that remains today. So I would think that that would be something we would want to look at as well. Particularly in terms of, you know, if you're looking at cost, how, for whatever reason, students are taking online courses, is there a possibility that we're saving money through doing it? So that's another thing that I would be interested in having the answer to. Thank you.
I guess change of the description of online campus, opportunity should go to a superintendent's office through Mr. Smith. I'm sure that you'll be reporting to your boss.
Yes, we will follow up on that.
Thank you. I have Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Just the comments about the parts of the audit reporter that are being done by the Office of Program Evaluation. I don't make a random connection that I think that it has to be something that we're looking at fiscally. I think it depends on what the purpose of the study is. You know, when we're dealing with doing a study about our reading program because we want to ensure that we have the best reading program, to me, that's not a financial study. So I don't mind the pieces of the difference depending what the report is and the information coming to us.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, following up on that a little bit. I do see, I think I agree with Mr. Velkoff on the idea that we need some sort of independent assessment. You know, when we get it, we should have some way of evaluating it. And that's kind of the point, I think, of the Audit Committee. I like having them listed in here so we can have a look at all that's going on, sort of, you know, throughout the system, evaluating programs. But I agree with Mrs. Smith. I think it can be helpful just to know the price tag of a program, just to know it, you know? Because if we decide that, you know, if goals are set and it's not meeting those goals, then, you know, then we know how much we potentially are spending on something that might not be working. But if, whenever we look at it as a cost-benefit thing, if we look at programs as cost-benefit, then we have to be able to evaluate the benefits as well in some dollar way, right? Which is tricky.
And that goes back to the question. So when we look at what we're actually evaluating, so if we're going to evaluate the financials, and that has to be part of the question. If there's a financial aspect of it, then again, when we have that collaboration with the audit office, they might want to go down the financial side. Our folks in OPE can really evaluate anything that we ask them to with a very objective eye, I might add. So regardless of the outcome, it really gets down to the question that we want to have answered. And if there are financials involved, then we can add that. And if there are financials involved, then we can add that as an aspect and collaborate with audit to see how best to do that.
Anybody else before we do go-backs?
And Ms. Quinn has something additional to add.
Ms. Quinn?
Push it a little harder, Ms. Quinn.
Not no.
There.
I just wanted to add that in the ESOL program review, it talks about how fast our students will go through the different levels. So there is going to be some component of efficiency built into, I believe, the program, and we could work with Office of Program Evaluation to have that information.
Thank you. Anybody else before we do go-backs? If not, I have Mrs. McLachlan for a go-back.
Just quickly, I wanted to thank my colleague, Mr. Velkoff. I thought that was very beneficial for you to bring to our attention how we can actually maximize this board, being better aware of not just the work that our audit office does, but Office of Program Evaluation. To my knowledge, not a single one of the 12 of us have been trained, at least from an academic standpoint, on how to evaluate reports and identify if there's any additional information that should have been considered or that would add to the board's understanding and appreciation for the programs we have. I have every faith and confidence that this board, its relationship with the leadership team and Dr. Garza, has always been about collaboration. But I think it has a benefit to what Mr. Velkoff said, that being able to have some additional professionals that serve the board, provide that performance audit capabilities, it would be a win-win. So that's my support as the audit committee looks at this, and I think Mr. Velkoff is correct, that the board giving direction to the audit office to say, we are interested in these studies and would value your professional assessment of what we can learn from it, is great.
Any comment from audit staff? Any other board member? Yes, Mrs. Strauss?
Just to remind my colleagues that if we are concerned, that we are asking for a certain audit or study, we always can contract out. You know, whether or not we want to have an audit of an audit, if we're concerned about an audit of an audit, then, then going to an outside contractor, if you really want that far out, that is always an option, is what I'm saying, is that if we feel that regardless of any activity of people that work for us, we can always go to a contractor if that is our wish.
I didn't sense from Mr. Velkoff or my comments, we're talking about auditing, you know, the program evaluation. We're just saying, this is, they have the academic skill set to look at a report that's done and say, you know, from an auditing standpoint, performance as well as financial, did you take this into account or that? I mean, they're serving the system, so it's just a.
Okay.
And I also might add that OPE, we do serve in an independent capacity. The reports are not, they're not edited by me, nor are they edited by the superintendent's office. I receive the reports, and there have been some changes to how the process has worked, but I receive the reports in PDF format, and those are the same reports that you receive. And any changes to those reports that we had to the math study came through the audit committee, so I just want to be, to clarify that point.
Just want to remind board members that these studies will be presented to us, School Board, and then, you know, depending upon where the discussion goes, we could even send it back and do further study on certain areas and come back. So we'll have plenty of opportunities to work with. With that, this is coming up for the board action at the next meeting. If anybody wants to propose any amendment, I would love to have that by the end of this week, by Friday, rather than waiting until the day of the meeting. Well, thank you so much with this meeting is, next steps.
Do we have next steps on this?
Next steps.
No, okay.
Only thing is, maybe having, you know, superintendent to look at the description of the online campus and clarify or correct that, supplement that, that's the only one is the next step. With that understood, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, but before we leave, thank you all very much. You can go, but we have a closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider prospective candidates for employment pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Strauss, all those in favor? It's unanimous, we're going to go into closed meeting in five minutes.